Hello, everyone. Welcome to Spill the Tea with O I D. My name is Dora Diaz and I am your host and your president of the Osceola Democrats. I am here with my co-host Lee.
Right, I am the secretary of the Osceola Democrats.
Hi, Lee, and now we are here with Mayor Jose Alvarez, who is running for county commissioner. And I would like to introduce you to Mayor Alvarez. Hi, hello.
How are you?
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
How are you?
Good, good. So we are with Spill the Tea. I am drinking just some iced tea just to cool down. I love tea and it's really good. What are you drinking? Tell me about your coffee.
So this is Cafe Bustelo.
Cafe Bustelo. I love Cafe Bustelo.
It's gonna wake you up. It's strong enough to wake you, try to wake you up.
It is, it is. That's my favorite coffee that I like to drink, so I understand. Lee, what are you drinking?
I got me some English breakfast tea, so I'm just chilling with that.
All right. And I'm sorry, I don't drink tea. I've tried a lot. I just haven't found one that I really can enjoy. So I'm a coffee type of guy. I don't drink alcohol or anything. I just drink coffee.
I love coffee. I feel like it's very warm. It's very good. But thank you, but we just want you to hear the spill the tea. You know what I mean?
Well, let's go for it.
So right now, for our viewers who don't know, you are the mayor of Kissimmee. And Kissimmee is one of the biggest towns in Osceola County. Can you tell me how your experience or as Kissimmee mayor, how would that help you become county commissioner? Or what's the difference in becoming a county commissioner?
So I became the mayor in 2016. Previous to that, I was a city commissioner. I got elected in office in 2012. I'll give you a little history of myself. I'm a real estate broker. I've been in real estate for over 21 years. President of the Association of Realtors here in Osceola County back in 2009. So I've been in leadership from the local, state, and national level when it came to property rights and protecting the housing fund that is in Tallahassee, the Sadowski Trust Fund. So that was my job was to lobby for Florida Realtors in Tallahassee for property rights and also for the Sadowski Trust Fund to be protected. Because as you guys know, that is where the main funding is that goes for affordable housing. In 2012, I was asked to run for city commission and I did. I closed down. I used to have several offices. I closed them down. I kept two Realtors so I can at least make a living. Because the salary of the mayor is not really that high and you should not look at a salary when you want to serve in public office. So to me, serving was very important. And so I became a city commissioner in 2012. Started getting the city involved in many of the committees and boards that we were not involved in. One of them was the Commission on Homelessness. And I sat in the executive board of the Commission on Homelessness back when I got elected in 2012 and started getting the city connected into different boards and transportation because that's my background. Prior me moving to central Florida, I worked for the Florida Department of Transportation. So I have a lot of transportation background and still have a lot of great friends in DOT. So as a city commissioner, we did a lot of initiatives that we pushed forward. Then as a mayor, of course, to me, now I'm the mayor, so I'm able to push more initiatives forward and it takes a team. So it takes the entire commission to hopefully at least get three votes to get them passed. And so these are initiatives that I've always worked on, which is homeless. Make sure that we had workforce housing that we get ready to build. As we are now, my final project as I leave office, four and a half years ago, I asked Toho Water to donate 20 acres of property that they weren't using. They did. Now that I was the mayor, they donated the property over to us. We started doing the feasibility studies that needed to be done. And now we're getting ready to put an RFP to actually build 348 unit of workforce housing. And I'll tell you a little bit different between workforce housing and affordable housing. Is workforce housing is for the working poor. And as you know, Osceola County has majority of the working poor because they work for the hospitality industry. So these are the families that these units will be for. But the good thing about the workforce housing project is that it will have what is called wraparound services. Wraparound services mean childcare for those parents. Let's say there's a parent that, you know, they have a small child. They cannot afford childcare. So one of them has to leave work. And so this is how they end up, a lot of these working poor families end up in those motels is because one of them has to leave work. So this wraparound services will have childcare for those that live in the community that need it. And also it will have an education side of it, which is a project that I started when I was a commissioner, which is called Project Open. And what this is, is we actually, to be able to qualify for Project Open, you must be homeless or really low poor. And so what it does is when we kicked off this project was medical assistant, right? So we will graduate in medical assistant and they will getting jobs in Celebration Hospital and Advent Health. It's done so well and we put more funding. We started the project with $30,000. Right now, we provide over $140,000 because we expanded the project into construction, welding, aviation courses. The aviation course that we did last year, we had 11 students that graduated and the minimum salary for that job was about $48,000 a year just to start as an apprentice in that position. And so they all had a job as they graduated. It cost us $55,000, but we changed the life of not only 11 individuals, 11 families. And so like I said, to be able to qualify for that, you must be homeless to be able to qualify for that program. And so this is what I bring over to Osceola County is the work that's been done in the city and the successes that we've had for this past seven and a half years that I've been in office is a continuation into Osceola County District One. A big section of District One is inside the city limits. At the airport, which is one of the best pieces of properties that Kissimmee owns and actually is now rated as a national municipal airport, which before it wasn't. This airport brings over $170 million in revenue into the county. And so we've been able to grow and bring more businesses into the airport. But on the side of education, what we did was, so we noticed that every time that we tried to attract a company to come to Kissimmee, the first thing that we asked is, where is my workforce coming from? So what we did is we did an initiative at the airport that we created a section of the airport as an education center. So it has different type of aviation schools, mechanics, different type of pilots. And so now when we try to attract those companies and that's why they're coming to us is we're telling them, we're actually creating your workforce. They're right here. And so they're hiring from the local community. And this is what I want to continue to do. Unfortunately, the county has never partnered with the city of Kissimmee with our airport because they say it's a Kissimmee airport. But actually, the revenue that it brings in is for the entire county. So we all benefit from it. So I want to make sure that we can continue to work on the project. The last one that I have to complete there is a brand new tower that we're already trying to get a federal grant from it. I've been working on this for six and a half years and I got gray hairs to prove it. And it's almost right there. So I'll be able to continue, be happy to continue that project as I go into the county.
Mayor Alvarez, while we're on the topic of, going back to the topic of affordable housing, what role do you think the county commission should be playing with ensuring affordable housing for Osceola County residents?
So we have to make sure that we keep lobbying for fundings for affordable housing. That is one of the, that's one of the hardest things to do because it's like a lottery, right? But unfortunately, what our legislators continue to do is rate the Sadowski Trust Fund. You know, in the past 10 years, they raided over $2 billion out of the Sadowski Trust Fund that they've taken it out and used it for other purposes. And this is why we continue to make sure that they leave that funding alone. Sadowski created the Sadowski Trust Fund for affordable housing. The funding that goes in there comes from real estate transactions. Every real estate transaction, there's a percentage of the closing of that transaction that goes into that funding. And so for, you know, so many years in the Realtor community, I've been fighting for Sadowski. So when I went into public office, of course, I continued to fight for it because it's so needed. So I think the role as local government is to make sure that we have those fundings that are necessary to create permanent home. Let's not put a Band-Aid on the problem. We know what the problem is. Let's create a cure for this problem and not just put a Band-Aid on it. And the cure is let's house them, let's get them into permanent homes. But let's also add what I said, which is what is called the wraparound services, which is the actual HUD model that is out now. When Obama was in office, that's what was created, right? So affordable housing with wraparound services. That was created under the Obama administration and I thanked them when they did that because it actually adds more than just housing, right? So we add the component of education. We add the component of childcare. You know, we have so many different things that we could add in there to help those families to move to a second level, right? From where they're at now to help them to move forward in an affordable place where they can have a roof of their own. And so the role of ours is to have great communication on the state and national level and make sure that we continue to try to get the fundings that are needed. But we also, you know, we are the hospitality industry, right? And so what I've asked some of the people in the hospitality industry is, why don't you partner with us, right? So your workforce is making a minimum wage. Well, not in Disney anymore because I worked for a year and one month, two months with Unite Here to get to 15 and we got it. And they were very surprised when they saw the mayor of Kissimmee sitting inside of a negotiation room for 15. So I don't know how they feel about me right now. But so what I've asked is, these are the employees that you have. So majority of these people clean room for a living and when they go home, they have to go home to a room. So why don't you partner with us to make sure that we provide workforce housing for those same employees that you have, right? So we can provide that. We can provide transportation to get them back and forward from work. And there is the issue that is fixed. I don't believe in Band-Aids. I support permanent fix. And we've done very well here in the city of Kissimmee. We have a lot of great organizations that we're partners with. We have the One Stop Center, which is Community Hope Center. That's what we have. All our counselors, they work there. And so what they do is when we send, the people go there, they help them find the programs that they qualify for, right? So they're the ones that handle that. We provide funding to them. Last year, I requested the city commission to add an extra $40,000 for them to hire a new case manager that would deal mainly with the people inside Kissimmee, right? So I want to continue that, we continue to do that. We also provide funding for council on aging because they also have case managers there. So we work with different organizations to try to bring them permanent fix. Let's stop putting Band-Aids to the problem. We know what the problem is. So in Kissimmee, we've been very successful with it. We don't have an ordinance that is illegal to be homeless in the city of Kissimmee. The county does. The county has an ordinance that is illegal to be homeless on the West 192 corridor. Kissimmee doesn't have that.
I actually, I didn't know that. That's something new. And I love when I go to interviews and I learn new things. And that's something that I didn't know that the county had an ordinance for.
Yeah, it was actually, the ordinance was requested by Commissioner Chowdy when she got elected in office. So that ordinance is on the West 192 corridor. And so that puts a burden on our law enforcement because now they have an ordinance. The good thing is that we have such a great sheriff that he knows that there's an ordinance that these people can be arrested and he doesn't do that. So he goes and he educates them. He gets them to where they have to go to provide, to get them the assistance that they need. And that's what we do in the city of Kissimmee. And that is the number one priority that I have once I get elected in office is to request the county commission to get rid of that ordinance. Because I don't believe that you should criminalize somebody for being homeless. They're not there out of their own choice. And so to criminalize it, I think that is very wrong. And I could be wrong, but that's just the way that I feel that that was a bad decision made in the county. And that will be my top priority to make sure that we remove it because we don't have it in the city of Kissimmee and we don't have that issue. When we have homeless that concentrate in one certain area, we have our law enforcement that goes out there, takes them information, where they need to go, who they need to contact. We get the council on aging over to them. We get Community Hope Center over to them and we get them the assistance that they need.
Now, I really glad you said that you, as the mayor of Kissimmee, that you've worked with several organizations like Council on Aging, the Community Hope Center. Both have been the spotlight of the nonprofit of the week and the Osceola Democrats. Recently, just due to the COVID-19 crisis, we have seen an increase of hotel and restaurant workers. They have been protesting and they have been suffering due to not being able to pay rent, utility, and no healthcare. Can you talk more about how you were negotiating for that 15 minimum wage? And how were you helping them?
So as the mayor of Kissimmee, you know, since the COVID-19 started and all those employees got laid off at no fault of their own, you know, a majority of them haven't seen a paycheck since the middle of March. We've been sending letters to the governor and requesting the governor to go ahead and approve this payments. If the issue is continuing with that website that was obsolete when Riscott turned it on, just so he could keep his numbers up by saying that Florida did not have a high unemployment rate and it was because of the system that they created. So now we ran into the COVID-19 and all these thousands of people got laid off at one time. And so now is when finally the cat is out of the hat, right? So now the picture is there. So what we've asked this governor is, why don't you fix the website? Why don't you at least give them the $600 from the federal side that came in? Why don't you just do that? Why don't you just give them that money while you fix that issue? Why don't you provide them with theirs? Not only that, 13 weeks of unemployment. Not only that, the $200,000 of unemployment, which is ridiculous. No one can live out of that. It is a shame that this state is in the condition that is in. And so we have to make sure that we continue to fight. And we have great people in Tallahassee that continue to fight. But as you know, we're the minority in Tallahassee, but we have the loudest voice. And so we don't give up. We continue to push. And what I keep telling the families that keep calling me every single day and I feel for them. And so we keep fighting for them, myself, Senator Torres, and John Cortez. We continue to fight. One of the first thing that we requested the governor is do a special session. Bring the legislators back home. Bring them to work. Let's get this problem fixed. No Republican decided to help us, right? So it went into death here. This governor decided to just push it aside and we continue to see what we're seeing now. And so now what they do, they blame the people for not filling out the information correctly, right? So what we tell them is, don't give up because that's what they want you to do. They want you to give up and not continue to put in your information and keep continuing to apply. That's what they want us to do and we cannot give in to that. So we have to continue the pressure and continue to push to make sure that we could get the fundings that Osceola County deserves to have.
Yeah, and like recently that I saw that in the news that Osceola County placed first and second in the list of most unemployment files according to the Florida Department. So that is really affecting us, especially with a lot of our workers here are in the tourist industry. So what do you think, what do you think is the future of the economy in Osceola County looks like?
You know, so we're trying to get businesses back up. I mean, the city of Kissimmee, I'm proud to say, and you know, I'm gonna always push Kissimmee forward. We were the first ones to come up with the Rental Assistant Program. We were the first one to create the small business. There was two different small business loans that we have. One of them is called a micro loan, which is for that self entrepreneur, right? That had to close their business down. So that small business that is five employees or less, they can qualify up to $5,000. And then we have the businesses from six employees to 70, that is $70,000. As you guys know, in Osceola County, we did not qualify for the CARE Act funding. And so what we did was, we were getting $467,000 from CDBG. And so what we decided to do is we requested HUD and that's what we're waiting for, the approval of HUD, to use half of the funding to rental assistance and the other half that is going to go for the small mom and pop businesses to make sure that they can survive. If we can do that, we can bring the economy back. But you know what? We did what we did in Disney and we got to 15. We need to now push it in the entire state. The state of Florida should have at least the minimum of $15 an hour. And so this is something that I tell everyone, as you go to the ballot, that's going to be in your ballot, right? So we need to vote for that. We need to make sure. And that was the reasoning also behind the 15 with Disney, right? So when we finished the negotiation with Unite Here and the Teamsters, we said, you know what? Now we're going to take it to the state. Now we want to make sure that this can be done. And I think Universal, after they saw that we won, since they don't have unions, we started actually having conversation with their employees. And Universal decided to raise their salaries because they were so afraid. But you know what? It's okay to show them that fear because it's what they deserve. And you know, I, when Disney approved the 15, I made it public. I thanked them for doing the right thing because their employees were not asking for a dime more than what they deserve, right? So they deserved the 15 and I know they deserve more than that, but at least the 15. But we make sure that in that negotiation, those employees that were there previously were also able to get a brace, right? So because a new one will come in at 15, but if you were already there several years, right? So that was going to be an issue. So actually, this is going to over $23 an hour that will be done in a period of time. So I was very proud to work with Unite Here and the Teamsters and I will continue to push that to make sure that our county and our state has at least a minimum of $15.
Mayor, shifting gears, you talked about a lot of Kissimmee's progressive policies already on, you know, affordable housing and, you know, workers' rights and things like that in the economy. As you know, Osceola, we've got a lot of problems with, you know, the environment and a lot of people are concerned about coal ash being dumped and the toll road going through Split Oak Forest. I know Kissimmee's had a lot of progressive policies when it comes to the green initiatives that you've got going on. But what direction do you think our county should be going in when it comes to environmental sustainability?
So of course, first I gotta talk about what we've done in the city of Kissimmee. You know, when I first got elected as mayor in 2017, Sierra Club approached me and it was a clean energy initiative. And I brought it on and I got it passed. It was a war. It wasn't an easy thing, but I got the three votes that I needed. And on that same day is when I joined, together with 406 other mayors throughout the United States, to stay in the Paris Agreement. And so we did and we passed it in the city of Kissimmee. And you know, the county had an opportunity to do that and they did not move forward with that. And so I'm very proud because of that. We continue then on the clean energy side, where now we have the car chargers, right? On our streets in Kissimmee and in our parking garages. We bought now, we buy vehicles that are clean energy vehicles. But one of the last things that I guess I will leave behind is that the city of Kissimmee, come July, will be the first city in the state of Florida to have all its facilities 100% solar energy, right? So we united, KUA united with 11 municipal power companies and we're doing three of the largest solar farms in Osceola County. And so when that came about, I brought to the commission and I said, you know, if we're going to offer the customers of KUA and other utility companies solar energy, why don't we show an example that we are also those that can do that? And I got the commission to agree upon. And so come in July, it was supposed to happen this month, but you know, COVID-19 and so many issues that happened that it was delayed and we're pushing for July. And once that solar farm, the first one gets done, the city of Kissimmee will be the first customer and all our facilities will be 100% energy. I already have the county staff in conversation with KUA because I want to make sure that we bring the same thing with solar energy into the county facilities that are inside KUA and then to get the facilities that are outside of the KUA area that are in the OUC area, to get them to do the same because OUC is a partner of KUA in the solar farm. So I want to continue to push. You know, I'm not called the climate mayor for nothing. You know, I pushed for that Sierra Club's initiative and also for the Paris Agreement. And like I said, it was a battle. It took us two meetings. It was a battle, but I had a full room of planet lovers like me, right? And they all came and they all said that our planet, we need to save it. And I'm going to bring the same thing to the county. So really, the transition into the county is to bring the same successes that we've had in the city is to just roll them into the county because it makes sense. We are a great county. We have a lot of potential, but we have to make sure that we do engrow the right way.
Do you have any comment on how the county has handled the split of forest with the toll road initiative going through there?
You know, I try to stay out of the county's decisions as much as I can because it usually backsfire on the mayor when the mayor gets involved in something that the city has nothing to do with it. But everyone knows where I stand when it comes to protecting our planet and when it comes to clean energy. And you know, I just don't, I don't get my hands inside the county's business. I try to make sure that they make the right decision. And you know, they should be well-educated before they go into that county commission, before they make that decision. Because you know, the way it works is when the agenda is done, the county manager, the same as in the city, sits down with each commissioner and talks about the agenda and make sure that they understand every item, right? But even if you get to the diets and you have any type of confusion on an item on the agenda, really easily you could say, hey, guys, we need to table this. We need to have a workshop on it. We need to have a conversation, but don't vote. And then after you vote for it, say that you didn't understand it because that to me is not correct, right? So I've been in public office now since 2012. And when I vote on something, it's because I understand what I'm voting for. If it's something that comes behind, you know, in my diet and I don't have enough information, shame on me for not having it because you have that information before, ahead of time. But if you're not sure of what you're voting on, it's really easy to say, hey, guys, I think we need to table this. And those things should have been done and it was never done. People voted for it and once they voted for it, you know, it's really easy after you make that vote to just say, oh, I didn't know what I was voting about. Well, you know what? Shame on you because the voters put you there because they hope that you know what you're doing. And so that doesn't happen with us in the city. We make sure that we know what we're voting on. And if it's a subject that we don't know enough about, I'll be the first one to say, we need to table this and move it out. Or either one of our commissioners could, would do that the same.
Why do you think transparency is so important on the county commission?
Transparency is important everywhere, right? So my life is an open book. You know, people know my life. All you have to do is Google Jose Alvarez and my entire life is there ever since my real estate career and now in public office. And so transparency is what our constituents deserve, right? So you have to be open with them. Every time, so I'll give you a little story. When I first got elected to the city commission and I was sitting behind the diets, every time I had to vote for something that I knew, because you know, there's always people in favor and against it. You're always going to find that because unfortunately, we can't please everyone, right? But every time that I had to vote on something, I always used to first explain why I'm voting it for, right? Why am I going to do this vote yes or no? I'm going to explain why. And I remember one day, the old mayor of Kissimmee pulled me aside and said, you know, you need to stop doing that. You need to stop. You don't have to explain to anyone why you're voting for. And I said, no, I have to explain because I work for them. So whether they like it or not, I'm going to explain it. But you know, in my past, what I've seen is people have approached me and said, I don't agree with that subject, but I appreciate that you explained to me why you had to make that vote. So that's a habit. If you watch all my commission meetings, I always explain why I'm voting for something. I always explain why I'm voting for something, especially when I know it's something that is a hot item. Uh, that is gonna have pros and cons in it. And as an elected official, you have to make a decision. But you gotta make a decision, an educated decision. And if you don't know enough about it, educate yourself. That's why you have staff. Do your homework. In this day and age with computer, I always tell people, let your fingers do the walking, right? So Google has everything. You just put a a specific subject and the information come there. So. I never go to a city commission meeting without doing my homework, uh, even after I speak to my staff. Right? So I'm the type that I'm always asking questions. Because I wanna know, because when I'm gonna make that decision, I wanna make sure that I'm making the proper decision. Is everyone gonna be happy about a decision? Unfortunately, they're not. You're always gonna have those that believe in a different way. But this is why we live in this great nation of ours. You know, I was born in a communist country. Uh, and and I'm so thankful for my mom to bring me here because it brought me to a country that gave me that right that I didn't have in the country that I was born. And so I take that, I don't take that for granted. And so as an elected official. The only people that can put me in office and take me out of office is my constituents. So I have to make sure that I explain myself to them once, twice, and three times if I have to. And and I, again, my life is an open book.
I do appreciate that, um, Mr. Mayor. And I saw you at the Kissimmee peaceful protest last week. Thank you for coming. And what?
It was it was an honor to be there, uh, you know, um, for us. Uh, it it was a sign of unity. Uh, and this is the way that it should be. Uh, we should, uh, you know, a- as you saw, you were there. Uh, none of our police officers were dressed in dry gear. We were together walking with uh with with the community with signs. Uh, because we are one Kissimmee, you know, the uh, the model uh of uh what I had in my last two campaigns in the city of Kissimmee. It was called uh one Kissimmee for All. And someone asked me one day, why one Kissimmee for All? I said, because we all are here uh to work with each other. And and as an elected official, I represent everyone, even those that don't support me. I still represent them and my door is open. Uh, you know, uh, I I sit with more constituents than any of my previous mayors did. Uh, because I believe that I owe them that. I I work for them, right? So I have to respond to them. And so my doors have always been open. Uh, I don't hide behind a a a door. Uh, matter of fact, uh, KPD sometimes doesn't like too much that I go on walkabouts. Uh, because I like to walk in my community. I like to sit down in Bucito and have a cup of coffee. And before you know it, I'll have three or four people sitting there talking to me. Uh, and sometimes they drive around to see if I'm there because the owner of Bucito says. There's a car that keeps driving around and, oh, look, he's coming now because he saw you. And so I sit in different spots because people deserve to have a mayor that they can they can reach to. Uh, and as a county commissioner, I would do the same thing. Uh, it would just be a transition over into the county.
Hmm, I wanna know what type of policy or do you do you think um you can put in place that would address the concerns of these protesters?
You know, so we have to make sure that um the police department uh runs their department adequate, right? So uh with the uh with that uh the eight policy that came out. Uh, when that was sent to me and they asked me if my law enforcement had it. Um, I went over to my chief and we've actually had it there for uh over four years. Uh, right? So we have to make sure that we treat everyone uh as a human being. And so I don't believe that just because you're carrying a badge, it makes you a different individual. And that's how I believe in law enforcement. Uh, one of my daughters is in law enforcement. Her husband is in law enforcement. And so I believe that law enforcement officers are human beings just like us, right? But that badge doesn't make you any better than us. And once we see that that individual and the type of trainings that we have in the city of Kissimmee. We can see and weed out uh the rotten apples because unfortunately, uh, there's people with bad heart in every profession. Right? That's just how life is. And so what we have is we have programs in place. To make sure that we can identify that individual and we can bring them in. And if we have to sit them in a desk and we have to continue to send them to training, and if they continue to act the same way. Uh, they're gonna have to go. Uh, and I believe that once an officer gets fired because of bad treatment to the community. Uh, that officer should not be hired in any other police department. Right? So if it's a rotten apple in Kissimmee, it'll be a rotten apple no matter where they go. And so that needs to, that record needs to go around and make sure. And I support law enforcement. But I support the right decision and the right thing to do.
Um, Mayor Alvarez, with these protests, it's it's hard to deny that a lot of the youth are very engaged in the moment. And we are the Osceola Young Democrats, which means we represent, you know, Democrats in our county under the age of forty. So what message would you have to our our Democrats to help support your campaign? Why? Why should we support your campaign?
You know, what what I asked him is, again, you know, uh, do your research. Uh, look at the initiatives that I've worked on, and I continue to work and and and. I I have a door, an open door policy. And you know, it it makes me so happy uh to see the youth uh involved. Uh, because uh for a while, we we were missing that, right? So uh, you are our future. Uh, and so it it makes me, as a dad and a grandfather, it makes me happy to see uh the youth getting involved. Uh, uh, in the issues that are happening right now. They're ugly issues. Uh, that we need to find a permanent fix and stop putting bandages, the same way that I talked to you about the homeless issue. Let's start putting a Band-Aid and let's make it a permanent fix uh with what's going on. Uh, we need to find a permanent fix. And we need to make sure that this doesn't happen again. And so what I ask the young professionals like you guys is, you know, look at my track record. Um, you know, if you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call. You know, uh, I'm always there, right? So uh, I'm in every social media uh there could be. Uh, sometimes my staff even says. You put way too much in social media. So I always put whatever meeting I'm attending, what event I'm at. Uh, and what I tell my staff is, you know what? I work for the community and and I want them to know what I'm doing. Right? So I don't have to hide. I want them to know that I'm in a metro plan board meeting. Or I'm in a Commission on Homelessness meeting, or I'm in a, sorry about that. Um, and so I wanna make sure that I'm accessible to them. Uh, and uh, and I hope that I can get their support uh to get me into the county commission so I can continue. The work that we've done in the city and just uh follow through in the in the county. But like I said, uh, I have initiatives that I wanna get done. The first one is to get rid of that ordinance uh against homeless people being on the corridor. I wanna get rid of that. I wanna make sure that we provide the adequate funding for those agencies that are out there doing the work, helping our community. Uh, to get back on their feet. Uh, and I wanna continue to uh lobby in Tallahassee in uh Washington DC to make sure that we get. The fundings that are needed, especially now uh with the COVID nineteen. Uh, Osceola County in the state of Florida, um, it's gonna need funding. Uh, and it's gonna need someone that has an open door uh with legislators from Tallahassee to DC. Uh, and I've been working with legislators uh in both Tallahassee and DC. Uh, in my career as a Realtor and now as an elected official that I continue to be a Realtor because I still sit in the board. Uh, of of Realtors. Uh, so I continue to be active uh in those boards. I have not let that go. Uh, and so um, this is the message that I sent to them is do your homework. Uh, it's really easy to talk, right? So anyone can talk. Uh, but talk is cheap. Action speaks louder than word, right? So look for those candidates that have uh completed uh the work that they've said that they 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 will start doing. You know, when it comes to roads, uh, since I've been a mayor, uh, I have completed three of the major roads here in Kissimmee, which is Oak Street. Dire, uh, Carroll Street, right? So I I said I was gonna work on roads and I did it. You know, I said I was gonna work in our airport and make sure that we provided adequate funding. And bring more jobs and opportunities in our community, and we did it. Uh, the medical district that was created after I became the mayor. Uh, we pushed into that medical district and now we're the third largest medical district in the state of Florida. And it's right here in 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 Little Kissimmee, right? Uh, the second largest city in central Florida. And so I continue to push forward and continue to work. And I assure you that I will continue to do that in the county. Uh, once the voters uh entrust me with their vote. They entrusted me with their signature. I'm actually the only candidate that qualified by December by signatures. Because I walked the entire year door to door from March to December, and on December twenty first. I was already qualified by petition. And so I'm a door to door person. Uh, you know, I do that in my career as a Realtor, because that is my career, right? So I, my career is, I'm a Realtor. I serve in public office because I like to give back, right? Because this country has given me so much. And this is why I decided to serve in public office. And so I'm the type of person that, once I run for office, I hit the street and I go knocking on doors. And so myself and Senator Victor Torres, uh, we used to walk every single day and every weekend, and we did that for the entire year. And on December twenty first, I qualified by petition. And and I'll give you a little story. Right before December twenty first. I was a little disappointed. I was missing about seventy something signatures. And so I was disappointed with myself because I said that I was gonna qualify before the year was over. Uh, and and I said, man, you know, Christmas is coming. People are gonna be busy. I don't wanna bother them in Christmas and, you know. Putting my face in their doors. And so I'm gonna have to wait uh until uh twenty twenty to qualify. And my brothers and sisters of United Here, they went out. And in one day, they collected over a hundred and twenty five signatures for me without me asking them. And so uh, they invited me to the Christmas luncheon. And so me and my wife, we went to the Christmas luncheon. Senator Torres, uh, Commissioner Angela Edie was there. And so they they were giving out gifts to the uh to the members of the union, right, the Disney employees. And they said, well, we have a gift for the mayor. And I go, oh, okay. So I went to get my box. Thank you so much. They said, no, no, we want you to open it. And it was over a hundred and twenty petitions signed that they on their own went out. And did it for me. It was a hundred and twenty five signatures. And so I asked them, I said, why did you do that? And you know what they said? They said, Mayor, because you didn't have to do what you did with us when we were negotiating the fifteen. You were already the mayor of Kissimmee. I said, but I promised you when you guys helped me in my election. That whether I win or lose, I was gonna be in that negotiation with you, and I kept my word. So they went out and they wanted to make sure that I qualified that year. And so I became the only candidate uh to qualify by petition um in the i- i- in uh in District One. I hope I didn't talk too much. It's the coffee.
No, it's perfect. Um, I think we only have um one more question for you, so I'll pass this over to Dora.
I I'm sure Mayor Alvarez is gonna love this question because I think you and I. Uh, agree on this. What are what are your favorite places to spend your time with in your district?
Within my district, uh, so when I have uh that little bit of time that it's this, I I tell you, uh. Uh, sometimes I work fourteen hours a day, sixteen hours a day between the city and then my real estate, uh, which is how I support my home. Uh, so whenever I have a little free time, uh, I sit there uh right outside of downtown Kissimmee in in Bucito's. Uh, and have a nice cup of coffee, you know, or I'll go with a few friends of mine and we'll sit up in celebration and. And just sit by the water there and just uh enjoy a cup of coffee and sit there. As as I told you, I don't drink alcohol, so. Uh, you know, I have a, the only bad habit I have is is I love to smoke a a a nice cigar. Uh, and that relaxes me. And so even sometimes my staff will tell me, Mayor, you look a little bit stressed out. Uh, go have your cigar and your coffee. And so I go and I sit there, especially in downtown Kissimmee. I sit there and like I said before, before you know it, there'll be five, six, seven people. Uh, that just actually go there and they sit there with me and they just start talking. And before I know it, the owner will come out and go, you have more people outside than I have inside the restaurant. Uh, and you know, I enjoy, I enjoy to sit there and talk to people. Um, a a lot of uh uh young uh business uh professionals, especially in the real estate industry. Uh, you know, they come and and they sit down with me and they ask me questions about the the real estate business, you know. Uh, and so I try to help them as much as I can, but it's having that conversation and sometimes it's it's thirty minutes. You know, that that I have and uh, um, you know, it it's it's relaxing for me. It's relaxing. And then the rest of the time, of course, I spend it with my families, with my girls, with my grandkids. Uh, and I look forward to when I do that. And uh, I I live a very simple life. Uh, sometimes I I I proudly show like I live a very boring life.
Oh, no. That was very, very sweet. I love Bucito's too. It's one of my favorite places to get coffee. Um, but it's been an honor to um spend a little bit of some tea and cafe with you. And I really do appreciate listening and learning about um about yourself. And I hope our viewers do the same way. So I really thank you. I appreciate it.
It was an honor to be invited to your show, uh, really. Uh, it is, like I said, uh. I love to see uh our youth uh involved, and we need to get more of them involved. Uh, because you are our future. You know, everything that we're doing right now, we're doing it for you. You know, everything I've done in my life, I've done it for my kids, and now they're doing it for for their kids. And so. Uh, I love to see how you guys are involved, and I say, keep going, uh, because we depend on you. And uh, let's keep going to try to see if we can get that guy out of the White House.
I agree.
Well, we continue to drink a lot of coffee.
Well, Mayor, I will see you around, and I wanna thank you so much. I hope you have a wonderful night. Thank you, Lee, too, for coming on and helping us co-host. So thank you. All right, everyone. This is Mayor Alvarez.
Stay safe.